All right, we have a quorum, I think. We have a quorum, so at this time, I'm going to call the Anacortes City Council meeting to order. And Ms. Hunt, would you take the attendance?
Mr. Carter?
Present.
Mr. Young?
You.
Mr. Walters? Ms. Cleland McGrath? Ms. Moulton?
Here.
Mr. McDougal? Mr. Miller?
Here. Sorry, Mr. McDougal's here. I missed the mute button.
Present and accounted for. Thank you, Mr. McDougal.
Okay, and Ms. McGrath has joined us. All right, so we called to order and taking attendance. We'll now go on to item two on the agenda. And the first item is 2A. It's the COVID-19 update. As of today, the Governor Inslee paused all counties in their current phases for two weeks. He did that last week, last Monday, actually. The next evaluation will take place May 18th. This means Scadwick County remains in Phase 3 of the roadmap recovery plan, and no restrictions, no new restrictions will be put in place. Scadwick County's current case rate is 275.2 cases per 100,000, and that's over the last 14 days. Our goal is get to the number of 25, so we have some work ahead of us. Scadwick County is also experiencing an influx of new COVID-19 hospitalizations at rates that are above the state requirement to stay in Phase 3. So we need to keep an eye on that, and we'll, we'll address that next week. 116,000 of Scadwick residents have received at least one dose of the COVID vaccine. As of the 8th, on Saturday, we had 4,978 positive cases in our county. We've had 68 deaths, which I think is an additional fatality over a week ago, and 320 people have been hospitalized. The county is estimating in the 98221 area code that our cases remain between 410 and 419. At Island Hospital, they've tested 15,730 people, total positive cases with 321, and admitted to the hospital than 57 people. We had no fatalities at Island Hospital. In Washington State, there's been 416,000 cases of COVID and 5,609 deaths. In the United States, we've had 32.7 million cases with 581,000 deaths. Worldwide, 159 million confirmed cases of COVID-19, including 3.3 million deaths, and that was reported by the World Health Organization. And that concludes my update. Are there any thoughts? Comments? All right, we'll move then to item 2. It's the Port City Liaison Committee Report.
Mayor Gear?
Yes, Cleland.
Thank you. We had a great meeting on May 4th. Mr. Carter, Mr. Young, you and some, a number of other city members were there. We did a quick COVID update. You know, when it comes to Port, the Port and City trying to coordinate when it reopening, we're still kind of on the same page and, and waiting for further guidance from the county and the state, the CD, the state. You know, they had a transit shed meeting about whether or not, how they, whether or not events will continue there. They had a lot of public comment, and I think the commissioners are still kind of weighing the options, but they did appreciate the, the participation. When it comes, we talked a little bit about the Second Street and an interlocal agreement. I believe that there was a, the Port has provided a rough draft for the city to review, so they're waiting on that. We talked a little bit about the Maritime Strategic Plan and hoping to involve the new chamber president, Jessica Sickles, so that she's kind of on board when it comes to local businesses. And then finally, we talked about the Depot Plaza Stage application. Since the bathrooms are completed, we're hoping to put together an application through the county to continue to support the farmer's market and other events that happen at the Depot. So fingers crossed that that, that might happen. So I think that is about what was covered. I apologize for the screaming if you can hear it. But if anyone else has anything to add, thanks.
That application for the stage will be reviewed on Wednesday with the county. So we have turned that application in. Okay, the next item is item 2C, our Housing Affordability Community Services Committee.
Mayor Gear?
Mr. Walters?
We met last Wednesday. We had sent out a survey to community service providers, various agencies, nonprofits, other entities that serve Anacortes. We reviewed some of the initial responses. We made some tweaks to that survey. And then we simply continued our planning for our meeting that is next Wednesday, a little over a week from now. What we're going to be doing there is inviting community service organizations in to brief us on what are the problems that they see, what barriers do they see to providing effective services in Anacortes? What gaps do they see in the services that are provided? And what the city can do. We're very much in the stage of identifying the problem. Not yet solutions. We're going to circle back to that. But we'll also see how the meeting goes. Depending on attendance, we may need to have multiple meetings. We'll, we'll adapt to what information that people bring to us. So that's going to be one of our big events for our committee, and it's a week from now. We've sent out invitations to all the service providers in the area that we're aware of. If anybody didn't get one, they should get ahold of our committee or Joanne in the Planning Department, who is coordinating that effort. And then on behalf of the Finance Committee, I just wanted to remind council members to send Mr. Hoagland a memo describing what you want to see in the 2022 budget. He sent out an email also reiterating that earlier today. It can be whatever level of detail you want. Doesn't have to be formal. Could be a list of bullets. Could be more detailed. But we do want to get all the council members' input to Mr. Hoagland so that he can send that out to department heads and other relevant staff tomorrow. So anything that you can dash off before the end of today or very early tomorrow morning, I think would be helpful for him. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Walters. I wanted to add one thing. We've received a lot of comments and concerns from the public about RVs being parked on our avenue and some camping along the Tommy Thompson Trail. And I want to assure the public that the Police Department, Legal Parks, the Anacortes Family Center, the library, and the museum staff are all working together to address this issue. The last two weeks, the Anacortes Police Department and the Anacortes Family Center has been down on our avenue, actually making contacts with people that are living in their RVs. I drove there this evening on my way, on my break before the meeting, and there, we went from nine RVs a week ago, and I think I may have identified five this evening. So I just want to assure the public, we are on it. We're, we're addressing it. We're working with people to find options for them and resources. So there's just been a really, an uptick in concern from the public. And so we'll brief you as we go through this. This week, we do have a meeting of all those departments for next steps. So that, that is that. And at this time then, I'm going to go on to Public Comment, which is item 3. And if you'd like to speak to the council about something that is not on the agenda, it's your opportunity to speak now. If you would raise your hand, I will call on you. But I don't see any hands raised. But I do have one letter that was sent, that was by a concerned citizen. They asked me to read it into the record. So if you'll allow me a moment, I will read this letter, and then we'll move on to the next agenda item. Dear Mayor and Council, I'm relatively a new resident in this great community of Anacortes, although I've been in Scadwick County for over eight years. I love being here and enjoy and promoted as many great resources the business establishes as possible. Unfortunately, over half my time residing here has been during the COVID pandemic, which understandably has hindered my ability to patronize the restaurants here. When takeout was the only option for several months, I was discouraged by the type of materials used by too many establishments to carry the food and beverages, let alone the automatic inclusion of condiments and utensils. These materials and items cannot be composted or recycled, so there's unnecessary contribution to the waste stream. In particular, styrofoam is extra harmful to the environment and is essentially banned in most progressive communities. While I can certainly appreciate the challenge in utilizing better food and better containers and shopping bag options, very little plastic material is viable even for recycling. Even for waste management has greatly limited the acceptable plastics to recycle for a variety of reasons. For starters, now that our options to enjoy our restaurants have been expanded, we start phasing out of this pandemic, I see this as a time for the city to, number one, ban styrofoam containers. Number two, insist the use of compostable utensil straws and containers for condiments. Number three, encourage purveyors to ask customers if they need utensil straws and napkins and condiments. And number four, discourage the automatic use of plastic bags for orders, especially single-use or small orders. A unified message from the city on this front would be very effective, especially if other local establishments are highlighted as models of what is possible. The city would even launch an initiative with offering reusable products, like carryout bags for the city's local and restaurant participants. Thank you for this opportunity to hear my concerns and needed regulations and reasonable solutions. I would be happy to help out. Elizabeth Walker. And that concludes my public comments this evening, and I don't see any else, anyone else with their hand up. So we'll move on then to item 4, which is our Consent Agenda, and it's items A through E.
Mayor Gear?
Mr. Miller?
I move to approve Consent Agenda Items A through E.
Second?
We have a motion by Mr. Miller, a second by Mr. Carter. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Close sign, motion carries. We're now moving to item 5 under Other Business, and 5A is Ordinance 3087, Vacating the Right-of-Way of a portion of 11th Street adjacent to blocks 242 and 243 in the map of the city of Anacortes. This is a special with an action item. Ms. Swetnam.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Members of Council. Tonight, we brought back this ordinance and tried to capture the outcome of the discussion last week on the conclusion of the public hearing on the vacation petition. So I just wanted to note a couple of things before council deliberates. The, the first thing I wanted to note is that there was a Scrivener's error that the second recital, the second whereas, references petition to vacate right-of-way on 10th Street. That should be 11th Street. So if council's inclined to approve tonight, you could ask staff to make that change. The other difference from last week, I'm going to, I'm going to share my screen here really quick and show you. And I hope that nobody from Public Works is watching. One second here. Okay, can you all see the map that's up there? Yes, okay. So this is made by the Legal Department without the help of GIS. As you can probably all tell, I didn't want to bother them. But Ms. Cleland McGrath raised the point that last week, that if the city is not vacating the 10-foot strip along B Avenue, did we need to adjust the legal descriptions of parcels, of vacation parcels 2 and 3 to kind of align with the corners of the recipient's property lines? And I coordinated with both Planning and Public Works, and that did in fact make more sense. Neither department had any concern or issue about making those adjustments. So we did revise the legal descriptions so that there is now a straight line that runs from the northeast corner of the Ortman Parcel at 2401 11th Street to the southeast corner of, you can see there where the 11th Street kind of hits into the parcel number 56739. So that's just a straight line that's then divided in half, and you can see that we, we did not include the legal descriptions for vacations 4 and 5. So those are the only changes that were made. I did try to include in the second-to-last recital some analysis of the section of AMC at its 1250070. That's the prohibition on partial vacations. I wanted to capture council's thought on that so that that can be clarifying for future petitions. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Mayor Gear?
Yeah.
No, the only thing I really wanted to say was that how much I appreciate the clarity and the time that's been put into trying to find a solution. And also the exhibits that's made it clear, not just for us, but for everyone that may be watching. So thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Gear?
Mr. Walters?
I'm sorry, Darcy, did you say that you, you did update the legal descriptions?
Yes.
To reflect that map?
The ordinance contains the correct legal descriptions that reflect the map I just showed you.
Okay.
And thanks to Public Works for getting that turned around quickly. They have like a day to do that, so.
Mayor Gear?
Mr. Miller?
And, and yeah, I'm, I'm not going to hold your, your red line drawing to the, as long as the legal description is correct.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm, I'm good with it, and I would move to adopt Ordinance 3087, Vacating Right-of-Way of a portion of 11th Street adjacent to blocks 242 and 243. Map of the city of Anacortes with the change in the whereas second recital to 11th Street.
Second, okay.
We have a motion by Mr. Miller, a second by Mr. Young. Is there any additional conversation? Ms. Hunt, would you call for the vote?
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougal?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Swetnam. At this time, I'll move to item 6. This is the public hearing section of the meeting. Item 6A, I will be opening a public hearing on the CDBG 2021 Annual Action Plan. And Ms. Joanne Stewart is here tonight to present this. This is for discussion and possible action. Ms. Stewart?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. So tonight, we're making the decision on whether to pass the action plan, the annual action plan, off to HUD for their approval. And so a little bit of a background, the Community Development Block Grant Entitlement Program provides annual grants on a formula basis to entitled cities and counties to develop viable urban communities. And the goals of this plan, so we do this every year, we get an annual allocation. This year, we received $114,395. And so the goals that we plan to implement include funding supportive services to help individuals and families from becoming homeless, supporting efforts to reduce poverty, creating sustainable and healthy living accommodations for low-income seniors and disabled individuals. And so the projects that we're putting forth with this, the $114,000 is the public services, and we are providing to them $14,395. And then the Harbor House roof replacement, which they've requested $100,000. And so that's what we are going to provide to them. And that will help provide at least 60 people with decent suitable living. And then in addition to that, we are, outside of our annual allocation, we're providing, we're applying for a loan through HUD that is, uses our annual allocation as collateral, more or less, to help the Anacortes Family Center build their new project, the Landing. And so we are working on securing a $150,000 loan for them. And then that money will be paid out over the next few years with our annual allocation.
Council questions? Questions? Discussion? Members of the public, anyone have a comment? All right, no one from the public has commented this time.
Mayor Gear?
Mr. Young?
No, I, I just thought that since there's no comment from council and no comment from the public, I would move to accept the proposed projects in direct staff to submit the draft action plan to HUD no later than May 15, 2021.
Second?
All right, so based on that, I will, is there any other comments?
Yeah, Mayor Gear?
Just Cleland.
I will be abstaining from voting on this because I am a board member of the family center and one of the recipients.
All right, so at this time, I would close the public hearing on this. We had a motion from Mr. Young, a second from Mr. McDougal, is that correct? To approve the CDBG 2021 Annual Action Plan. Ms. Hunt, would you take a vote?
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath is abstaining. Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougal?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. So we're going to move on now to item 6B. It's our continued public hearing on our Critical Areas Regulations Draft 3. And Ms. Tess Cooper will be presenting this evening. Welcome, Ms. Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor Gear. Thank you, council. Tonight, we'll be continuing our discussion and review of public comments for the Critical Area Ordinance Draft 3. And tonight, we plan to continue to review the comments and discuss the staff suggestions. If we have time, we'll go over some real-world examples and implying the code so you can see what exactly it means. We have additional public hearing and testimony availability. We've left it open if there's anybody that wants to speak tonight. And we have the ability for council final thoughts if we get through all of the material. So just a refresher, public comment period ended on April 23rd. The written public comment period was open for 30 days, and we collected a number of comments. Last week, on May 3rd, we began to review those public comments and get city council's directions on the ability to implement those. Tonight, again, we're going to review the public comments, go through some case studies. And then future prod, project will entail implementing all of the final recommendations and final edits, creating the associated documents, and having a final decision. So at this point, I'm going to switch back to the previous our point presentation and the comment matrix. So my notes were that we left off on the last item on page 7 of the comment matrix. A comment that struck the statement in the draft for category 2, 3, and 4 wetlands. Development activities that result in alteration of category 2, 3, and 4 wetlands may be permitted upon demonstration through a critical areas report, meeting the requirements of this chapter, that, and dot, dot, dot. And I believe that Mr. Loring actually spoke at the end and gave us a little bit of more context in what they meant by this, in that it should just have a reference, that it's, that they don't mean to just strike it totally, that they mean to at least have a reference that beyond the critical areas report required in this chapter, that it must meet all requirements in this chapter as well. And if that's the case, staff understands and makes that recommendation to put that clarification in here. Previously, it was misunderstood what the intent was, and it looked like it was just striking it altogether. Staff put in here that, that our opinion was that that would result in a regulatory taking. So on that note, I do want to actually apologize and clarify that for any misrepresentation or misinterpreting of the comments and the intent of those comments, sometimes it's really hard to interpret from just basic wording or paragraphs what the intent was of the commenter and what the outcome was intended to be. So again, staff apologizes if we've misrepresented or misinterpreted those. It's really helpful, like Mr. Loring, to give us feedback. So please feel free to communicate with us and get in touch with me to provide clarification. Though I'm not sure if there's much discussion there from council, that if, if in fact, it's just adding that clarification, then, then staff definitely recommends that.
Mayor Gear? Can, can you reiterate what the proposed change is then?
Yeah, I believe and maybe, I'm not sure if Mr. Loring is here and wants to just step in right now. Is he allowed to do that and clarify? I believe from what I remember, the discussion last week was that up above that it should just add a disclaimer that beyond a critical areas report, demonstration through a critical areas report, that it must follow all of the requirements in this chapter. If category 2, 3, and 4 wetlands activities are proposed, alterations are proposed. I don't know if that makes sense, I'm sorry.
Yeah, does that, does that make sense? Because normally you, you, if you're complying with the chapter, you're not altering category 2, 3, or 4 wetlands.
Well, no, there's definitely, well, obviously, we're trying to avoid alteration of those. But that's what this provision is for, is specifying the performance standards if there's no way to avoid it, what the mitigation requirements and the performance standards of that is. We can't outright prohibit them, so we have to prescribe what the requirements are if there's no unavoidable way under a reasonable if there's no unavoidable way under reasonable use doctrine to, to impact the wetlands. So we can't just remove the ability to alter them. We have to put the provisions in there under reasonable use.
Yeah, maybe I'm just missing some of the context because the list that follows that introductory sentence seems to prescribe what you have to do in order to demonstrate that. I mean, it seemed to me that as written, the text covered this issue.
Yeah, so maybe, you know what, I'll, if, I will just say let's, staff recommends following up with Evergreen Islands and Mr. Loring to see if we are understanding this wrong or not, but agreed. Staff's original opinion was that the way this was written, that it was important to leave it that way and that there wasn't any necessary changes required, but I want to double check that we're not misinterpreting, like I said, what their intent was for this.
Mayor Gear? Mayor Gear?
Mr. Miller?
Thank you. Yeah, this is, I'm kind of with Mr. Walters. I mean, the original language and the original staff interpretation, I think, actually made sense. I know Evergreen Islands has a different opinion of that. And I'm more than willing to, to take a look at that, but, but right now, I'm more concerned about the, the initial interpretation of staff and making sure we get it right because I think it's, I think it's, it was okay as, as written.
Okay. So if there's any ground, ground-shaking, earth-shattering epiphany information that they were trying to provide us with that, then I'll bring it back. But if not, then I will just say that counsel believes that it's okay the way it is and we'll just move forward. Does that sound okay?
Mayor Gear?
Mr. Walters?
Yes, so for, in the alternative, if it said you had to comply with the remainder of this chapter, there are, there's a sentence that, a couple lines up that says that you, you can't do this at all in nineteen seventy-two, two-five. So I don't know how you would comply with everything else in this chapter. It seems to me that what you need to comply with is the stuff in this section, which lays out exactly how you do it. But yeah, staff should definitely follow up.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure that I'm not missing something in what they were trying to recommend. Okay, so the next is the buffer categories, and I'm just going to take these three here all together. They took our buffer category recommendations and that we implemented directly from Department of Ecology. They gave us revisions, including Department of Ecology dropped the fifty down to a forty for category three. And so staff in draft three implemented what Department of Ecology recommended. But Evergreen Islands is recommending for the last column of buffers that we bump it from twenty-five up to forty, twenty-five up to forty, forty to sixty, and twenty-five up to forty.
Mayor Gear?
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Cooper. This is a section that I have a question about as related to the existing critical areas ordinance, chapter seventeen, and tell me if my reading of this is right. It looks to me as if the category four wetlands in the existing critical areas regulations have a forty-foot buffer across the board. Is that the case?
Let me refresh my memory.
Okay. It's seventeen seventy-three, four, zero, one is the table, I think. Wait, I have it up here somewhere.
Yeah, I'm just, here we go.
My point being that I think that we, well, tell me first. Sorry, then I won't jump ahead. I'll wait till, there we go.
So you are correct. At the moment, for category four wetlands, forty is the lowest. So in essence, that would be continuing that across the board. But in some certain circumstances with land use intensity and so forth, again, this is a different approach totally. Land use intensity and buffer incentive, buffer, sorry, enhancement incentives and so forth, that there are circumstances where even a smaller buffer can potentially be functional. So I can see how that definitely gives heartburn that, that those are even lower.
This is, I, what I'm seeing it as is an opportunity here that we have with the new ordinance is, is not to do worse, not to take away our protections, but to increase them or at least maintain them. So I am open to discussion, but my feeling is that the forty-foot buffers for all the category four wetlands are appropriate. I feel also, I mean, even the small wetlands are really important to protect.
Mayor Gear?
Mr. McDougal?
I'm in complete agreement with Ms. Moulton. I do not wish to see any backsliding on existing buffer widths.
Mayor Gear?
Mr. Miller?
Well, I, I think you might, I, I, I think, I'm, I'm for going with what ecology recommends, but because I think what we're missing here in this discussion, it's not necessarily backsliding. It's a different way of interpreting protection of wetlands by adding the piece of intensity of use nearby. And correct me if I'm wrong on this, Cooper, isn't, isn't that, isn't that where ecology is going in this recommendation? It's not, it's not a matter of just looking at the buffer in a vacuum. It's the buffer depending on what the, what the use is nearby.
Yeah, so let's, let's look at these tables and break it down. So, exactly. So for, and again, this is the, this isn't changed, but for all commercial, industrial, institutional, retail sales, non-residential zones and residential zones and high-intensity recreation, all of those activities under high land use intensity, for the category fours will have a fifty-foot buffer. All major development will have a fifty-foot buffer. So that is increasing the buffers by four, by ten. Modern intensity is staying at forty for the category fours, which is only the activities that include moderate intensity open spaces, including parks, unpaved, six-foot-wide trails, and logging roads. Only those activities that specifically meet that will be subject to a forty-foot. The only things that are subject to that twenty-five-foot are low-intensity open space, passive recreation, unpaved trails, well, I guess that's this trail, so sorry, trails, that's logging roads and paved trails. So are the forty-foot. The only thing that is falling underneath this is the unpaved. So resource preservation, passive recreation, and unpaid trail. So if you remember from last week where we showed the pictures of how close the Ship's Harbor Interpretive Trail gets, goes actually over and around and up to the edge of the wetland, we are showing how that was requiring the hundred and fifty-foot or the seventy-five-foot buffer, but there's no way that that met that. So is it reasonable that a use like that would meet that twenty-five-foot buffer for a category four inter, wetland? So that's the only time that that's going to be lowered. But with all normal, regular development, it's actually increasing to a fifty-foot buffer.
Thank you for that great, very clear answer, and I support the recommendations that correspond with ecology. Thank you.
Mayor Gear?
Walters?
So I, I do think that that is an important point, that the system that we're prescribed to use now is different than the flat numbers that we were looking at prior, that we have in our existing code. But the definitions of high intensity, moderate, and low land use intensity, we did talk last time about modifying those so that they were a little bit more clear, that high intensity includes any residential development. I believe the ecology definition is urban levels of residential development, which would be basically everything inside the city. There's also a definition of passive recreation in there. There was some maybe confusion over what, what surface of trail. Where, can we use precisely the definitions of those land use intensities that ecology prescribes?
Yeah, and that, that's what I started off, that my statement saying is that these are not the ones that we've discussed in changing and they, they will be changed. So I'm just going off of what's here, but we've had lengthy discussions on how we're going to improve these to be more specific and clear.
So I think that's important. Does ecology in their definitions, do they retain passive recreation?
No, they have no, because it's, it's not a, a developed, passive recreation isn't a development. So they don't have a, a definition of it because it's not something that for critical area ordinances needs to be regulated. It's not a regulated activity. So they don't have a specified definition of it because it's truly a moot point. We're really truly just trying to make it clear and articulate what actions can happen, but staff has even discussed that instead of trying to clarify what passive recreation is, just removing it from the document altogether because it truly is irrelevant. It's not development. It's not impacting activities. It's not alteration of a wetland. It's truly just a recreational use that, that's not regulated in this body of regulations. And the only purpose of it being there is to say that it's not regulated, but that seems to be creating so much confusion that we can either make it extra super clear what it means, what passive recreation is, and why the intent of listing it is in here, or we can just remove it from the document altogether and get rid of that confusion.
I think I'd be in favor of that. Let's, let's not argue over terms we don't need. I, I do think that we're going to need to see how all of that comes together to, to make sure that we're achieving what it is we want to achieve. My question on buffer widths, though, really is Evergreen Islands contends in their letter that we're not following best available science, which obviously we're, we're generally required to follow. And they attach a thousand pages of exhibits, which I'll admit to not having read all the way through. But assumedly, the, the purpose for attaching exhibits is to build the record for appearing before the growth management hearings board. So I am very interested in knowing if, if we are adopting what can be justified as best available science. I understand that ecology has said that, that they like this and that's good from my perspective because we, we ought to be following what ecology says unless we have a very good reason not to. But I, I would like to know how it is justified. Maybe that's a few sentences, maybe that's more. I see you making a note, so maybe you're going to come back to that later. It's just we ought to know that that's justified or not before we make a decision as to how we proceed.
Mayor Gear?
I agree with Mr. Walters on that point, and I, I look forward to some more clarity of the, of the language as we go forward and we can, we can dig into it a little bit more then. And I, I'm also leaning toward removing the passive recreation out of it. If this is not a document to regulate it, then why is it here? So, yeah, thanks.
Mayor Gear?
Dougal?
I also like the recommendation that, that we just make sure that we've got a clear best available science recommendation for this, and then, then I would be more comfortable with it. Yeah.
Okay, that's great direction. So staff will analyze the documents provided to us. We'll enlist our consultants that provided us with best available in science to, to analyze it as well. And we'll come back with a strong defense on whether following ecology's recommendations and sticking with, meet that best available science or whether the information that Evergreen Islands provided us gives us a little more information to revise, revise our recommendation.
Mayor Gear? Okay, hey, Ms. Cooper, can you go back? You had, and I just, I kind of need some clarification. It's starting to all blur together. The medium versus low intensity, it lists trails under both. Did I read that correctly when you had it up on the screen?
It does.
I guess, I, I would like a little more clarification if you're gonna, if you're able to come back and understand is it, is it, I'm assuming it's the, the type of trail, whether it's paved or gravel or just natural. But to me, that is, yeah, parks, trails, and logging roads versus unpaved trails. I, I just, I, I feel like we need a little more clarification because the basic, a regular person would not know the difference. And that might give us some insight about the twenty-five feet versus forty feet when we discuss it next.
Okay, so staff will also more clearly define the differences between the land use intensities.
Yeah.
Perfect. So the next comment is regard to buffer width averaging. On the provision, I'm going to read with their strike view. Buffer averaging, buffer averaging widths is allowed if the buffer averaging does, so the way we had it was does not reduce the functions or values of the wetland, either through preservation or total buffer area or enhancement areas. So they suggest, because we have, does not reduce functions or values. So that would be equal to or greater. But they want to get rid of the equal to and say that buffer averaging, buffer averaging is allowed only when buffer averaging improves the functions and values. And then buffer width at its narrowest point is not reduced to less than seventy-five percent of the standard width for cat, and then we had it divided up for category one and two, no less than fifty percent or thirty-five percent, thirty-five feet for category three and fifteen feet for category four. So the way we had it divided up, seventy-five for categories one and two, and you can see, oh, they're not even in the table, but that's the three hundred-foot buffers for the, the more functioning wetlands. You can see fifty percent for category threes, and for a category three was eighty, sixty, or forty. And so if we, fifty percent or thirty-five feet, so fifty percent here would be forty. Fifty percent here would be thirty. But we said or thirty-five feet, which is ever greater. So we're kind of going more like that seventy-five percent. We're not allowing a full fifty percent for sixty or forty, that it has to be thirty-five feet. And then the same thing with categories fours. It's fifty percent or fifteen feet, which is greater. So twenty-five percent or twenty-five feet would not be able to be reduced by a whole fifty percent. It would have to be a maximum of fifteen feet, which is It would have to be a, a maximum of 15 feet, which is greater than a 50% buffer reduction. Staff doesn't have a strong opinion to remove that if they want to just make it 75%. And city council agrees with that. We can certainly consider that change if we do want to result in stronger protections.
Mayor Gere.
Walters.
It seems to me that functions and values instead of functions or values is probably more correct. So I would support making that change. Improves versus does not reduce. Maybe, maybe not. And maybe that is dependent on the outcome of the percentages. So if you have to maintain 75% of the narrow, at the narrowest point anyway, then maybe it's really not necessary to say improves versus does not reduce because it's very close to doing precisely the same buffer width everywhere anyway. On the other hand, I feel very ill-equipped to determine whether it should be 50 or 75 or 15 or 30, you know. I, I feel like we should be relying on the best available science here. And I, I, I did pull up the best available science report for wetlands and fish and wildlife habitat conservation areas and, and it's not immediately jumping out at me anything relevant to this discussion. But if there is some best available science on this, I, I would think we would want to start there. I don't know if Evergreen Islands cited it in their letter or if we have it readily available. But I would think that would be the basis for making the decision.
So we'll consult best available science to give us a better idea of what the answer should be on that. Everybody agree? So that's buffer averaging. And, and that's usually, so truly that's so it's, so buffer average, well, let me go back to that. So buffer averages is looking at the next comments buffer reducing. So buffer averaging is just that. You're allowed to reduce buffer in some area as long as you're increasing it in other areas. So that, that it's a net equality of the same buffer. So, I mean, that's the point of that not having the improvement in that buffer averaging is that, that you have the same buffer, it's just shaped differently. So now that I look at that, that, that's just a comment on that. But the allowance of them being able to modify it, maybe they, they should be required to improve it in exchange for modifying it. That, that's a possibility. So we'll consult best available science. Sorry to step back a little bit, but Evergreen Islands, under our buffer reduction provision, suggests that we remove it altogether and that reducing buffers shouldn't be allowed whatsoever without averaging it. But staff wants to clarify that the provision here is to allow flexibility in highly urban and developed environments where there's no functional buffer that exists on a site whatsoever. It's truly just hardscape pavement, parking lot or manicured lawn up to the critical area. Nothing's functioning whatsoever. So by doing so, by allowing a buffer reduction, we can actually require buffer enhancement on that site to incentivize restoration of the buffer. So even though it has a smaller reduced buffer, you're getting a ecological gain by doing so. So that's, we don't just outright allow and, and we, we'd have to look at the wording of it. But it's, it's supposed to be very specific and very clear that we don't just outright allow you to reduce your buffer if you want to. You can reduce it in exchange for enhancing it and improving site value. So truly, a buffer width is just an arbitrary number. And on a site where there's nothing there at all whatsoever, does it matter if we're meeting that number? Or does it matter if we functionally improve it to a certain number that is a gain, ecological gain regardless of what that number is? So that's the intent of that provision is to incentivize highly developed hardscaped areas to do restoration, buffer improvement projects. And to keep a little bit more of their property developable in exchange for doing that.
Mayor Gere. Thank you. So Ms. Cooper, thank you for that. It reminds me a little bit about the stream relocation conversation we had last week. And I think, again, this is another place where some more language to clarify and fill in what you just told us would be really helpful.
I can pull it up. I suspect that that language is in fact there. On the, in this provision that it is very clear and that it's just a revision that isn't generally received as being environmentally protective. So it was just requested be struck in general, but I will definitely look to make sure that is the case.
Okay, because I'm not, thank you. I appreciate that because I'm not getting that in my reading, but when you describe it, it sounds great.
Mayor Gere.
Mr. Walters.
Same here. I, I don't find an applicability statement that would, would narrow its applicability to the situations you described. But also subsection two in that section looks like it ought to be indented into a a paragraph, sub-paragraph under one, because one mentions that both criteria need to be met. But then only lists one criteria.
Section two A? Is that what you said?
If I'm looking at the same one, which I think is 1972 35 D.
Yeah, 235 D.
Subsection one mentions two criteria or if both of the following criteria are met. And then it looks like lowercase a is one of the criteria. It looks like two should be lowercase b.
Okay.
But like Ms. Moulton, I think I would advocate some kind of clear applicability statement that, that constrains it further. Or if it's already there, maybe reworking it to make it very clear at the beginning of the section.
Okay, great. I will make sure to do that.
Mayor Gere.
Mr. Miller.
I was thinking the exact same thing when, about the, the stream relocation, especially in urbanized areas. And again, if, if we can tie that language and the way you explained that, Ms. Cooper, I thought was great. Even though I do realize that some people disagree with that, I, I do not disagree with you, the way that you presented both the stream diversion and, and this. So if we can tie those together, I think that would be great.
I will make sure to do that because that is the intent for sure.
And it's good intent and, and I understand that some people disagree with that, but I, I agree with the way that you had presented it.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Mayor Gere.
Mr. Walters.
And then the next section is labeled increasing buffer widths. It's labeled with as subsection A. It seems like it should be subsection E and then all the subsequent sections. Another letter. So I think we have some numbering issues in the draft there.
Okay. Thank you for having that, the draft so handy. You guys both looking at that for me. Got too many other things on my screen here. Okay, great. So setbacks from buffers. Setbacks from buffers, buildings, structures, paving and other hard surfacing must be set back a minimum distance of 10 feet from the edge of the wetland buffer or edge of the wetland if no buffer is required, unless otherwise determined by the decision maker that a smaller distance would meet the intent of this subsection. So Evergreen Islands is requesting that we strike the last section that unless it's determined that a smaller setback would be adequate, that it's just outright a 10-foot setback from the edge of buffers. And, and staff really doesn't have a recommendation on this. I mean, the intent is to allow flexibility again in certain circumstances where we are super urban. You know, like I said here, improving a paved paradise, if you will. Some places are just just so developed, so hardscaped that a 10-foot buffer and a 10-foot setback from that really is arbitrary and makes no common sense. But I can see how for the majority of circumstances that those very few small conditions lead to worrying about that that provision would be allowed for everything instead of those very small few circumstances. So without really analyzing it, staff does not have our recommendations, whatever you, you all.
Mayor Gere.
Mayor Gere, okay.
Ms. Mr. Miller and Mr. Young.
Thank you, Mayor. Hey, I, I'm inclined to leave the decision maker language in there because you just, you just don't know. Again, I think about the streams going through the urban areas and we actually have those in Anacortes. But I'm thinking there might be some other areas that we have hardscaped there that again, I, I don't think our decision maker is going to be a bad actor in this. And having the flexibility to, to improve the situation is important. Thank you.
Mayor Gere.
Yes, Mr. Young, go ahead.
You know, my thought is that, you know, I agree. I don't think that there's the intent. The intent really is just to preserve those, the wetland and preserve it and take care of it. And I agree with Mr. Miller. I don't believe we have any bad actors. So with the staff not having a recommendation of change, the only concern I have is that we also create the provision for those urban areas to be able to mitigate the, the issue. So if the staff has no recommendation on this change, I'm okay with eliminating it.
Be clear, eliminating this recommendation or with eliminating the lines that was suggested?
Yeah, eliminating the lines that we suggested because I'm deferring the staff on this one. And if after their review, they don't think that it matters that much, that if they believe that they could address those few concerns they have about urban areas, I'm okay with that. Did I make that clear, Tess?
Yes.
Thank you.
One vote for following the recommendation, one vote for not following the recommendation. Okay.
Mayor Gere.
Mr. Walters.
Maybe a slightly different wrinkle on this. I understand you want to protect the wetland by disallowing development within the wetland. Then we require a buffer to further protect the wetland and also provide habitat. And the key there is to protect the buffer so that the wetland is also protected. So my understanding of this additional setback provision is for maintenance. If you put a building right up against the edge of the buffer, you're not going to be able to get to the backside of the building to perform maintenance. So you're going to put your ladder or truck or scaffolding or whatever into the buffer. And then you're going to end up with a, a buffer that is degraded. So it seems to me that it's pretty important to have the building setback some distance from the buffer. And maybe we could put a bookend of it of five feet or something. But this provision also includes paving and other hard surfacing. I, I wonder why that is required. Because if you can get, go ahead.
That, so, and if you, so it's not here, but I believe in the draft, it talks about it's for canopy and root structure. So for trees, you know, full-sized trees that are growing up on the edge of that, those, the roots and the canopy and the limbs are going to end up obviously growing out of that. Buffer, they don't recognize that line, the buffer where we can, we're only allowed to stay here. So, so pavement specifically is for allowing, you know, root protection of the root zone of the vegetation on the edge of that buffer.
So hard surface includes impervious and pervious surface, right? Do we mean hard surface or could we allow impervious surface? Or does that not serve the purpose that you're trying to achieve?
That's a good question. Let me, wanted me to, to point out that, that right now in chapter 17, there are no setbacks. So this is a whole new provision for extra protections that we don't have right now. So it's really all in, in what we feel would be prudent.
I, based on what you said, I would be inclined to at least allow pervious surface within that maintenance setback.
Right. I would interpret pervious surface is not hard surfacing if it's allowing. I think hard surfacing means that it, it diverts runoff. So I'm not sure why it's just, well, paving, I guess hard surface, well, structures, paving and hard surfaces. I'm not sure what that third would be other than a structure or paving, but.
The NPDS definition of hard surface includes impervious surface, but also permeable pavement or vegetated roof. I think that, that part's irrelevant, but maybe we do want to allow a permeable surface.
Mayor Gere. I, I'm leaning toward the hard surfacing being set back. It looks like in the same section, there's a, a little bullet point section. One is landscaping, one is uncovered decks, roof eaves and overhangs, unroofed stairways and steps. And number three is pervious ground surfaces such as driveways, patios and parking may be allowed, provided that it is engineered as a permeable pavement system as defined in blah, blah, blah. And such improvements may be subject to the requirements of stormwater management. So what am I trying to say here? You're asking. And rightly so, I, I, I'm more leaning toward the, the hard structures being set back. But not as much say the uncovered decks, the roof eaves and the overhangs. I'd like to know what other people think about that.
Yeah, the next comment below this, you can see is they are recommending that the uncovered decks, roof eaves and overhangs be stricken, that those are not allowed to extend into the setback. So as we're discussing this as a whole, we can look down at the next one as well. My point is that, so the point was that these types of exceptions are allowed in all setbacks, shoreline setbacks, street setbacks and so forth. So it was really just a consistency to carry it through with, over to critical area setbacks as well. Where, and there's provisions on how far roof eaves, I believe, are like 18 inches. They're allowed to protrude 18 inches in. Uncovered decks have to be at grade, so below 32 inches or so forth.
Mayor Gere.
Mr. Miller.
And since the staff has no recommendation on the change, I, my recommendation is to follow Ms. Moulton's point is to not remove those exceptions and be consistent, if that's clear enough for you, Ms. Cooper.
Ms. Moulton, was that your recommendation? You said to, to leave that part in?
Yeah, sorry, I was just thinking out loud. I'm not fully decided, but my leaning was toward not, my leaning was to leave that part in, yes.
To, to not cross it out. I agree.
Correct.
Discussion purposes, not for official, yeah, voting, but for discussion.
Mayor Gere. I, I concur that we should leave those sections in. However, if we However, if we want to be limiting them consistent with the other setback provisions and the rest of the code, I would think we would need to have a reference to that. Because otherwise, the full width, a 10-foot roof eve or overhang could be included. So long as it doesn't interfere with the tree branches or critical root zones. I'm not necessarily advocating that, though. I think, I think as a general matter, I, I would support leaving this section basically as written, except to avoid the use of the defined term hard surface if we can, to make sure it doesn't conflict with the definition in the stormwater chapter. Or the, maybe it's in the definitions chapter of Title 19.
We're kind of divided on that. Some say leave the reduction, the setback reduction provision in as long as we describe what hard surfaces are. Some said they agree in that we should remove the reduction provision. Do we have a consensus or should we come back to this one?
Mayor Gear.
Ms. Cleveland.
Yeah, I'm inclined to leave it as is and include the option for the decision maker to determine. I, I feel like we, a blanket statement, I mean, we, we're, we're adding this new setback of 10 feet. And I think to have a blanket statement might be detrimental to the few areas we have left to build. And, and I do think that, you know, whoever the decision maker is will work with best available science and make sure to find a resolution that is, that, that makes sense. The, then the uncovered decks and roofs and eaves, I think that seems reasonable to leave as is with further discussion if necessary.
Mayor Gear.
Mr. Young.
Thank you. I, I am agreeing with Mr. Miller, Ms. Cleveland McGrath and Ms. Moulton. I think that it really does, we're adding a new amount of space that's required. And I do think that we need a little bit of wiggle room. And that wiggle room doesn't mean that it's a nefarious intent as it is just the opportunity to assess the particulars of this unique circumstance that may come up. And without having that, I think that it boxes us into absolutisms that I don't think that anyone can guarantee at this point.
Mayor Gear.
Mr. Miller.
Thank you. Just kind of as a, as a pressing forward, I, I don't know if we have to build consensus just yet on, on each item because the public hearing is still open. Is that, that correct? I think, and this is a discussion item, I think it's great to identify some of them that we, we might not have consensus on. But we're really going to hash that out after we close the public hearing. Is that, is that correct, Mayor?
Yes.
Okay. Just so, just so I don't bog Ms. Cooper down on trying to get consensus on every, every item as we press forward tonight.
Thank you. I agree. That's good. Thank you for that.
You bet.
I do want to point out that we do in our code have a definition, an official definition for hard services, which means an impervious surface, a permeable pavement or a vegetated roof. So that, that will be in the same Title 19 definitions to fall back on. Yeah, let's see. This is good discussion here, waters of the state. Under our streams classification in the text for Fish and Wildlife Habitat Conservation Areas says waters of the state, including streams as classified in WAC. And here's where Evergreen Island and Mr. Loring both recommend an easy place to put the stream names back in, which we've heard so much emotional feedback from the community about having the names in the streams. So really simply just putting waters of the state, including streams as classified by WAC, including but not limited to Whistle Creek, Happy Valley and, and just listing them here. So we made a lot of effort to condense and eliminate non-functional filler text. That's why stream names are originally moved from the text because they had no functional scientific relevancy. And we talked about this above last week, of course. Before, there was other public comments that were unhappy with the removal. But this certainly is a, a very simple, very condensed way to add them back in. If city council wants to make this change, we, we have no official recommendation.
Mayor Gear. Ms. Moulton and then Mr. Walters.
Thank you. I fully support making this change and listing the streams. It gives us, gives us context and examples. So I think it's really important because, yeah, I think it's really important to name them and keep them here. Thanks.
Mr. Walters.
Yeah, I definitely support staff efforts to reduce and eliminate non-functional filler texts from the code. But in this case, the, the stream names represent the accomplishment of the community in recognizing and, and getting the city to recognize that these streams, which might otherwise be called drainage ditches or something artificial or something worthy of protection, ought to be protected. So I see really no harm in including them here and, and, and benefit to both the city, the community members and community groups that have argued for them.
Mayor Gear.
Mr. Young.
I agree. You know, I think that, but I think that there's not only a psychological benefit to the streams and creeks having names, it allows you to associate it with a specific place, recognizing, while recognizing that they do move. But I do think that it's important and I think that it's important to our environmental stewards and it's just important to us. And I, and if there's no harm in them being there, recognizing that they do move over time, I say we keep them in.
Mayor Gear.
Mayor Gear.
Mr. Miller and then Mr. McGugl.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm good with keeping the stream names in there. I was trying to match them up with what we have in our comprehensive plan, but I don't think that really matters. The, the good thing about having those, those names in there, it, I guess, takes the antiseptic nature out of, out of regulation, which is what I was trying to do with the, the maps as well. So not only the landowners or, or land users could understand where they are in relation to wetlands and potential wetlands, but also in relation to streams as well. So I, I think it's a, it's a good, it's actually, I think it has some practical value to have it in there as well.
Mayor Gear.
Yes, Mr. Carter.
I just wanted to say that I also am bored. It sounds like everyone else is, but I figured I'd say something so people remember what my voice sounds like.
All right, Mr. McGugl, did you have something?
Yeah, I also wanted to, to thank staff for the efforts to, to remove non-functional text. And, and I think in this case, this is a, a good exception to make for, to that effort. So agreement with the, the rest here.
All right, good.
Hi. Very good. And, and it is a very good solution to, to the issue. And that, I think it's probably a good idea as well. Okay, so Fish and Wildlife Habitat Conservation Areas and the buffers may be altered only if the proposed alteration of the habitat or the mitigation does not degrade the functions value. So this is a provision that I was remembering that Evergreen Islands just wanted the clarification. Added alterations of fishallic habitats or the buffers is prohibited, except as otherwise allowed in this chapter. They just want to clarify that instead of just saying habitats or sorry, only if the proposed alteration of the habitat or the, and any associated mitigation does not degrade the function value. So there's a little bit of wordsmithing, but it's just a simple clarification to make sure that we understand alterations must meet the requirements of this chapter. And, and habitat and mitigation must not degrade the functions value. So staff recommends considering this change.
Mayor Gear. So, so long as it's chapter and not section that's appropriate there, I, I agree with this because it puts, it simply puts the focus on the general rule, which is alterations are prohibited with some exceptions rather than the reverse.
With interest of time, we'll just keep sailing along. If nobody else has any feedback, I think we'll just mark that one as a good. Access roads and utilities serving a proposed subdivision may be permitted within the Fish and Wildlife Habitat Conservation Area and associated buffers only if the applicant's qualified professionals demonstrate and the decision maker determines that no other feasible alternative exists. All unavoidable impacts are fully mitigated and the use is consistent with this chapter. Evergreen Islands just added an extra clarification at the end of that. This paragraph does not authorize new access roads and utilities in Fish and Wildlife Habitat Conservation Areas and associated buffers for existing subdivisions. So it's only new subdivisions. And so staff recommends considering this change as a good clarification. Mark a check mark on that one since there's no discussion. Okay, this next one, there's going to be quite a bit of information and discussion. Evergreen Islands has some feedback on our stream buffers. In chapter 17, our current critics area ordinance, we have stream buffers that are 50 feet. And then, like we discussed last week, we have a separate riparian buffers, which are larger if there's riparian area. And we've kept with the 50-foot buffers, even though it's divided out by stream type. However, Evergreen Islands recommends scratching the 50-foot buffers altogether and using a different method, using site potential tree height for determining a riparian management zone area for larger, more protective buffers for streams. And so staff does not recommend this change. And we'll go through, not only talking about it a little bit, but if we get to our case studies and examples, project examples today, you'll see a little bit more why we propose that and, and not that it's not a good science. But it certainly can be incorporated somewhere else, not necessarily into the stream. So again, chapter 17 regulates streams and stream buffers at 50. And it regulates it differently than riparian areas and buffers. And so Evergreen Islands's comments and best available science that they've attached specifically talks about riparian areas, riparian management zones and the need for larger areas around those. We have maintained the separation of streams and stream buffers in riparian areas and riparian buffers separately in the code as it's proposed in draft three. And I showed you a little bit about that last week when we talked about the provision for Fish and Wildlife Habitat Conservation Area designation for state priority habitats and species. In that biodiversity areas and corridors are listed on that priority species list. And so therefore are automatically regulated as well as riparian areas. Riparian areas are on the list, so therefore they are automatically regulated as a Fish and Wildlife Habitat Conservation Areas, separate from streams and stream buffers. And, and this gets back to the same included, but not limited to the following. We did not have our riparian areas listed in the list, so staff recommends putting it right front and center, putting it as B, biodiversity areas and corridors as A, riparian areas as B, and then bumping all of this numbering C, D, E, F and so forth down.
Mayor Gear.
Ms. Moulton.
Thanks. Ms. Cooper, thank you. Can you give a, a brief definition again of what riparian areas are versus?
So I'll give you some visuals and we'll, we'll definitely get, so beyond this slide, I have way more discussion and examples to go into for you on this.
Thank you.
So what's the difference between stream buffer and riparian buffers and why? So again, we propose to keep both stream buffers and riparian buffers separate and not replace the stream buffers with larger riparian areas as suggested. And so if we go to state priority habitats and species list that we saw last week. My link is not working. But in that list, under that, I showed you that it takes us to this map. And this is the map that they are referring to, site potential tree height and riparian management zones values. So the reasons that staff is recommending sticking with stream buffers as they are and then having separate riparian management zones is one. If you look right here in the instructions for using this online tool mapper. The online map contains GIS data layers, data layers that will provide you site potential tree height and values for forested eco-regions. So it specifies right here that this application is for forested eco-regions. And that's what riparian habitat is, is riparian ecosystem is the extent of the area alongside a water body that significantly influences the exchange of energy and matter among terrestrial and aquatic ecosystems. So that's all of the functional vegetation and habitat surrounding a water body that provides shade, detritus for food inputs, structure as, as, as well as habitat. So that's the definition of riparian area. And so this method, site tree height for riparian management zones is specifically for forested eco-regions. And they've applied it to select urban areas. And that's specifically what Evergreen Islands cites in their comment referring to this best available science they've attached for this method, that it, it, it does apply for urban areas. But if you look at their map, it's only been converted in, applied in urban areas that are mapped in gold. So if we zoom out in the map, you can see that it's only when they say urban areas to apply it, Tacoma, Seattle and Bellingham are the urban, urban areas that they've used this method and converted it. And Bellingham are the urban areas that they've used this method and converted it to. Applicability. City of Anacortes, you can see has no orange areas where this is appropriate to use therefore the the green areas mapped. Is specifically site potential for forested ecosystems. So one, it hasn't been converted and applied to smaller urban areas like ours. Two, this map doesn't actually fully capture all of our streams. There are some streams missing. From the map altogether, so we really can't use it as the tool and you can see. Here is Grandview Cemetery, here's Saint Mary's. And here is where Happy Valley. Creek is supposed to be. And it's not even shown on the map, so we don't have the ability to use that for one important stream in our system.
Mayor Gere. Ms. Cooper, just some understanding. So this, the site potential tree height. Applies based upon the Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife. To riparian areas in the orange on the map and so. Is there any distinction between our regulation for stream? Stream buffer versus riparian buffer or are they functionally the same? Or at least that's yeah, is there a place where it's different in the city of Anacortes?
Right, and you'll see what case studies and examples will. It's yeah, kind of a nebulous concept and hard to understand. So yes, as we I'll get there and show you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, a little bit more about that.
Mr. Walters.
I'm also wondering how site potential tree height is determined, what the methodology is, is it just based on soils? I mean, otherwise what information do they have on a parcel by parcel? Basis.
It's soils and species types somehow if you if we click. So for this area, it would be based on soils and Douglas fir. For a recommended site potential tree height of his one hundred and eighty nine feet. So they're recommending a riparian management zone buffer of one hundred and eighty nine feet. In this part of our city. And so we'll go a little bit more into that. And examples I'll show you here in just a second. And the other reason staff recommends not using this map as a regulatory tool. Is just that they also have our. Streams mapped wrong. So this one is shown going this way in here. But actually it comes this way down and out through here. So by. Using and applying a stream buffer or a riparian buffer to what they have mapped. If we're pulling up the stream, then that's going to cause some problems as well. And then really to get to what you so yeah, so use a soils, you can see how the soils are mapped here and supposedly uses. I mean, if we look, I know that the information that Evergreen Islands gave us really goes into a lot more depth of why. This is recommended and how it's derived more than I can speak to at the moment. So we can go in more depth to talk about it. But for our urban environment. If you're looking at an area here where we have, what we've talked about a lot is we have piped segments or segments that are in roadside ditches. We have zero riparian habitat along this map segment at all. So. Functionally, what are we protecting when we're talking about riparian habitat? So what staff recommends is that we manage them separately, that all streams maintain either the ten foot. Pipe stream segment or the fifty foot stream segment specifically for areas like this that that's a lot more. A lot more common sense and less bureaucratic approach, ten foot, fifty foot stream buffers for most of our. Habitat, but in areas. Obviously where we have a forested riparian ecosystem. We were apply the fifty foot buffer. But then we also apply secondary riparian habitat analysis for the specific region. And which is the way we do it now because it's a priority habitat and species. Each individual project will have to provide their own habitat assessment for their site. Talk about their project and how their project is potentially going to impact that habitat. And then they're required to come up with a specific. Man habitat management plan for their site and their riparian habitat. So they do. Customized buffer and habitat management plan for their project in their site specific. So that's how it's pronounced. It's proposed in the code and that's how we recommend it. And again, I've got case studies coming up that will. Provide more examples. And really pretty much the same examples we just went over, but we can talk about it. So. So again, an area. You can see. Where we have streams that have functional riparian, there's a stream buffer. And we can measure. This stream has functional riparian. And a fifty foot buffer. A fifty foot protective buffer automatically. But. If this this house or let's just say this is a vacant lot, just for, you know, argument sake. This is a vacant lot. And there's a stream and there's significant riparian habitat, that lot would have a fifty foot buffer. But it would also have to do its own individualized report and come up with its own customized buffer and habitat management plane. For this riparian area itself. So it's having two separate protections now. So which is in a sense equaling the same. So this area here. Were to look at. Their height potential. I mean, we could certainly recommend that this is used for those certain cases. It's saying one hundred and sixty five foot buffer.
Thank you.
That discussion makes sense.
Yeah. I'm agreeing. Just I just wanted to weigh in, you know, I I appreciate the care that's given to. Ensuring that we protect. Our environmental buffers that are necessary for streams and all of that. I really do appreciate that. And in this case, I believe that staff recommendations comes wonderfully close to ensuring that. Even in a repetitive nature, just to make sure that it does happen and I'm okay with that recommendation by staff. I just wanted to weigh my opinion in at this point.
Thank you.
Perfect. Okay, so I just wanted to really go into an in-depth. Overview and discussion on that. So you really have an idea of what they're saying here and why. We agree, absolutely agree that our riparian management zones should be protected. And that we do have provisions for that, but we just don't think it's a common sense approach for our urban area. That it should be applied broadly across every stream, every reach of stream and every parcel that touches a stream. That this more customized approach makes far more common sense to our environment and is just as protective.
Mayor Gere. And if you if you needed any more to agree with staff's recommendation to not accept this change. I'm on board because that was a great, great presentation and the staff did a lot of good due diligence to. Essentially answer the mail on this recommended change, but I agree with the staff. Staff's position that you not recommend this change. Thank you.
Mayor Gere.
Mr. Walters.
Tess, can you point to where we where in the code we would be requiring the habitat management plan? Where the language is to articulate the threshold for requiring that rather than just the standard buffer?
Yep, it's. It's under nineteen seventy three, one, five, all of these state priority habitats and species. Are protected and therefore. So we have them designated. So then specific standards for other fish and wildlife habitats. Which is the priority habitats and species. Development activities and the uses that result in unavoidable impacts may be permitted in priority species and habitat areas and associated buffers. In accordance with an approved critical area report with habitat assessment management plan. And only if the proposed activity is the only reasonable alternative. That will accomplish the applicant's objectives. Full compensation for the loss of acreage and function of habitat and buffer areas. Must be provided in compliance with the mitigation performance standards and requirements of these regulations.
So if you're a landowner. You have a parcel that's not yet developed and you know that you have a stream behind you. If you go through the code and read the table, aren't you going to think that you have a fifty foot buffer off that stream? I mean, the way this is written. Is there a heads up to the landowner that you may have much more than a fifty foot buffer?
So that's in the critical area checklist that we're requiring with every permit. So. In most circumstances, of course, most project proponents either call us to get information or are required to have a mandatory pre-application conference. In which case they're told specifically from staff, not only do they have a stream, but they also have official life habitat protective. You know, air habitat conservation area. But that's part of the what we're talking about is the procedures that every permit that comes in the door. Is guided with, do you have a wetland? Do you have a stream or using these mapping tools? Do you have any of these other? Habitats or protective protected areas on or near your property.
Yeah, I think that that is a good step. I just tend to think that fish and wildlife habitat conservation areas encompass so many different types. Of special protected areas with so many different buffer widths. It seems to me that there should be some clearer way of expressing in the code itself. That you're going to be subject to a lot of different reviews and a lot of different potential buffer widths. Based on the types of habitats or species that may exist nearby.
Yep, that's our map of all of them. Let me turn these off.
Available to the public?
No, because of a lot of this, like I just turned that one off, bald eagles and so forth. A lot of these are. Masked and they're not available to the public. They're confidential. That's what I was looking for. So so truly the only way to know is to contact us for those confidential layers, but yes. All of the other layers will be available. So remember, we walked through the city of Anacortes interactive map where we added the wetlands. We added the wetland buffers, the streams, the stream buffers. When we're all through with this process, they will all be available on this map. Wetland, stream buffers, lakes ponds, they will all be right here for the public to access as long as it's not. The confidential information.
For sure. Okay, that would seem to me to be really valuable, especially if we tweak some of the language, you know. Indicating that three hundred foot wetland buffer is not the regulatory buffer that it might be a different width depending on the category type, that kind of stuff.
Yep, so we've got geologically hazardous areas.
So if you were to zoom in on that parcel that you had on the WWFW. Site potential tree height map from a minute ago, does on our map, does it show that it's in a forested ecosystem? That may get a much larger buffer than the standard stream width?
Let's see.
Just as generally, I think this stuff is so layered that both the private property owner, who is subject to the regulation. And the neighbors and the citizen groups and the community that has an expectation that these regulations are being applied. Will have a very difficult time looking at this, looking at the code and knowing what the numbers are going to be.
Yep, and if you can see, yes, there's a big green blob here for that forested riparian area along that stream corridor. So there is the stream, there's stream. But there's also that riparian area that is mapped as a regulated habitat.
Okay, that's. That's good. It's a step in the right direction.
So ultimately, yes, homeowners, as much information as we can give the property owners, homeowners on themselves. But all critical areas are, you know, are going to require. Professional consultants anyways, and they will all know exactly how to. Access this information themselves and be familiar with identifying it for for the homeowners. As well as contacting the city. So we get we get and you'll see most of the examples, all of the well. Most of the examples I'm showing you today are all exactly that is the homeowner said, I'm thinking about doing this. What do I need to do? This is what I want to do. What do I need to do? There's two examples of people that have just called and asked us. There's two examples of pre-application conferences. And really third one is more of a pre-application conference. They're they're all pre-project design where people know just to call us and ask the questions. And so that's all of the examples that I'm providing you tonight in that project idea phase. Where they're contacting us early to know. So that really is. Most of the time what happens. My computer's frozen. I apologize. Hold on just a moment. Okay. And now we're just going to, so we went through all the wetland section recommendations. Now we're in the streams recommendations and. These are all mirrored recommendations, buffer reduction standards, just like we talked about in wetland section. Evergreen Islands. Recommends striking wetland buffer reductions or stream buffer reductions altogether. Like we've talked about, there's definitely benefits to leaving that in. But so hallmark here. Make the language protective. Language more clear. I imagine that's the same feedback for streams that is with wetlands from city council. I'm going to go a little bit faster unless you guys have objections, really wave your hands and stop me, but so that we have time. Although, Mayor, you can tell me what your deadline was tonight, so I know whether I should just speed through this or just call this good and we'll do the case studies another day.
Well, and I, I'll lean on the council, but I feel like after about two hours, we're fading. So you've got another about twenty minutes and we're at that two-hour mark of, and I, I think, see what we can get done in the next twenty minutes.
That's a good plan. Building step backs from stream buffers, exactly the same recommendation, so I'll just carry forward your comments from that above. Roof decks, overhangs, eaves recommend, recommends striking this. So same as above. Type F and MP stream relocation, type NS stream location. So we talked about it in length earlier with just a general citizens' comment about stream relocations. Evergreen Islands makes that recommendation official, that they recommend removing the stream relocate, relocation provision. I'm assuming that, based on our discussion again tonight, that a lot of you see value in the intent of that and that just making the protective language more clear here is what we should do moving forward. Unless anybody wants to jump in and say no. So this one I'm not sure about, Evergreen Islands intent is really strange to me. But where we say, we've talked about and I showed specifically that designated fish and wildlife habitat conservation areas are specifically state priority habitats and species. Evergreen Islands recommends, so other priority habitats and species, Evergreen Island recommends striking that. Says section B and it's paragraph one must be deleted, so to remove that, and we're confused by that. It, just the way they presented it, the, this change is not recommended because priority habitats and species are protected critical areas. If we remove this paragraph, how do we have that designated critical area protected? So I'm not sure if there's more clarification of what they intended on that. But at this point, staff recommends, does not recommend following that.
Mayor here.
Mr. Walters.
Maybe some of the confusion there stems from what we highlighted in a previous comment. And that was simply that the language is written, that the development activity may be permitted in the area when you do this. And maybe if we reverse the language, as we did in a previous comment, to say the development activity is prohibited unless you do the following. The substance should be the same, but the general rule is then stated upfront. I certainly don't know that that's what the commenter intended, but it might be an improvement anyway.
That makes sense to me to, to change it.
And I think it would be useful, I mean, this is also the section where you said the habitat management plan would be required. And, and I think some rewording there would, would also be beneficial to say that if you've, you have one of these other priority habitat areas nearby, that you're going to have to upfront do that report in order to determine what your buffer width is.
Sounds good. It looks like this one down below is maybe where they did that. Fish and wildlife habitat buffer with, oh, no, the averaging, other than those designated by the city as habitats and species of local importance. Okay, so no, this is different. So this, okay, I was just seeing if that applied to what you were saying. But no, I agree, Ryan, that's probably a good approach. Okay, so the next one, fish and wildlife habitat buffer with averaging, we've talked about that above. Approval criteria, the decision maker may allow averaging of buffer widths when the critical areas reports demonstrates the following. Looks like they've added some of that clarification to this. Fish and wildlife habitat buffer with averaging for all fish and wildlife habitat conservation areas other than those designated as the city habitats and species of local importance. So they wanted to add that provision, so all of those wetlands that we've just incorporated into this section of habitats and species of local importance, as well as the ACFL. This is where the ACFL is designated as a critical area, is under the habitats of local importance. And then the other one is the Marchess Point heronry is a habitat of local importance. So for those that we've identified as local and important, that you cannot buffer with average for those specific ones, but you can buffer with average for all other. So that would be streams, species of local, or not, sorry, priority species and endangered species. You could buffer with average, you just can't buffer average for the species of local importance.
Mayor here.
Walters.
I, I think, I think I agree with the sentiment. I don't agree that, that putting it in the heading is sufficient. I think the heading should, should just say buffer with averaging, averaging for Oaxacas, maybe not all Oaxacas. And then there should be a line that says that you can't apply this to habitats and species of local importance. Because the general rule is that headings are not construed to be regulatory.
Perfect, and so they've done that language down below in the section A, so that makes sense, so. Leave in a.
A three-line heading is, is not desirable. Our headings should be shorter, not that long.
I think that's a reasonable approach. Instream or buffer habitat functions will be increased or maintained where native buffer vegetation is generally intact or increased where existing buffer vegetation is inadequate to protect functions and values. And they recommend. We'll have to look at the context of this. Instream or buffer habitat functions will be increased or maintained where native buffer vegetation is generally intact. For some reason, they recommend striking the, or increased where existing buffer vegetation is inadequate to protect functions and values. So let's look up nineteen seventy-three, four-oh. See what they're talking about there. Three, four-oh, so it's buffer with averaging again. Three, four-oh, A-five. Three, four-oh, A-five. Not sure that's correct.
A-one.
A-one? Thank you. Oh, yeah, A-one, sorry, we're, we're up above. Fish and wildlife habitat buffer with averaging for all Oaxacas, I like that. Approval criteria may allow the averaging of official life habitat conservation area widths when the critical area report demonstrates the following. Instream buffer habitat functions. Instream or buffer habitat functions will be increased or maintained where native buffer vegetation is generally intact. So what they're saying is that you can buffer with average where it's generally intact, but you can't buffer with average where it's inadequate to protect functions and values. So I'm a little confused by that recommendation. I would think that where you're increasing existing buffer vegetation. I guess removing where it's inadequate to protection. Do we have any discussion on that recommendation?
Mayor here.
Mr. Miller.
Yeah, I, I just, I just think that striking that last segment of that sentence just removes any, any flexibility, so I'm, I'm, I'm opposed to striking it out. That's how I read it anyway.
Mayor here.
Mr. Young.
You know, again, I'm still just a hair confused about what we're seeing with this, whether it's appropriate or not. But, you know, again, my ultimate goal is to make sure that we have some flexibility and that we are as clear as possible. So Tess, would you just tell me your thoughts on this one again? I somehow got a little confused as to what you were asking us to do in this case.
Yeah, it's okay, because I'm confused in what they're requesting too. I mean, I had originally wrote that staff recommends considering this change. I think functionally what it does is it does remove that flexibility, like you're saying. And in my opinion, I, I think that where buffer vegetation is inadequate, I think it's important to allow that, to improve it, even if we're reducing, again, as I explained before, a number is just a number. If the buffer is required to be seventy-five feet, oh, I guess it's in-stream, so fifty feet, but there's nothing there at all. What does it, how does it impact it if we allow them to reduce it in a certain area in exchange for protecting and increasing those functional values? But again, I, maybe it's laid in the migraine is fried to, that maybe we're over that twenty-minute mark, two-hour mark, where I'm not quite getting an understanding of what their intent is on this one as well. So we can either come back to this one, I can analyze it a little bit further and come back to it.
I, I think we could begin with removing the first comma in the sentence. And, and then I would suggest leaving the text that EI recommends striking, because it does, it would result in increased buffer. Or it would, it would result in increased habitat function where existing buffer vegetation is inadequate. Now, if, if you own the buffer, if you own the land that is serving as the buffer, might you be required to improve the buffer?
Yes.
But you might not own it, in which case you wouldn't be required to improve it.
Correct.
So with this provision, it seems to me that you could average, and you could average onto your own property and therefore be required to improve the buffer. And we could end up with a better outcome in terms of habitat value. But I, I'd be open, you know, to an argument to the contrary. And, and I, I would note that we do have, I think, the author of the comments with his hand up on the meeting. And maybe this is, if this is that two-hour mark, maybe it would be good to, to let him jump in and, and make his comments. Because I assume we're taking public comments at the conclusion of our, of our deliberations. Is that right?
Yes, so Tess, do you want me to go to the, to the participants now, or do you have any closing comments before I?
Mayor here.
Yeah, Ms. Maltz, and go ahead.
I was just going to say, we're so close, we just have two more comments to address. But if, if, I don't know what other council members feel like, I would love to get this done.
Can we get through two more comments and then go to our participants?
These ones are super quick and I can just.
So I'm going to make executive decision. Let's get through those and then we'll go over to Mr. Loring.
Perfect.
Thank you, go ahead.
Okay, so this one is exactly the same as before, they recommended striking the flexibility of they, less than seventy-five percent buffer reduction. And we had fifty percent or thirty-five feet or fifty percent of, you know, and so forth. We had the ability to flex, you know, make it flexible, buffer reductions other than just fifty percent or seventy-five. And they're, they're recommending seventy-five percent and striking the thirty-five-feet flexibility, which we talked about a little bit before, that we didn't agree with removing that flexibility in certain cases. Stream buffers is a little different, there were so many wetland buffers, right, three hundred, two fifty, hundred and fifty, hundred and ten, seventy-five, forty, twenty-five. That because there's such a variability in that, we felt that just a percentage didn't make sense and that we wanted to make sure that some of those smaller ones weren't reduced too small. But this one, it's just a flat-out fifty percent, or fifty-foot buffer. So whether we want to get rid of the or thirty-five foot, whichever is greater, and then whether we agree that seventy-five percent is important or keep it at fifty percent, like above. And then well, I, we'll go ahead, does anybody have a, a quick comment or feedback on that one? If not, I'll assume that it's the same opinion as the wetland buffers above.
Mayor here. That, that underlying text there pursuant to AMC nineteen seventy-three, eighty, B-four, I don't find, first of all, that seems to already be in the draft. But also I don't find three eighty.
Yeah, goes from three fifty-five to four-ten. So allow Mr. Loring to. Or is that one, is that our own reference? Maybe that's why it's underlined. So if he has anything, I'll, I'll look up that reference and we can bring it back to what that's meant to, if that's our mistake or theirs. And then when Mr. Loring talks about this one, if he has something that, about that one. So it's only other comments staff wants to make really quick before we move on. There's a lot of information, so it wasn't a specific reference change that Evergreen Islands provided in their table, but they had a lot of information about mitigation success and that the approach for compensation mitigate, or compensatory mitigation generally results in a loss. And, and previous mitigation efforts generally were not successful. And there's definitely a lot of best available science previously that says compensatory mitigation is failing. However, there's a lot of alternative approaches to mitigation that, that for compensatory mitigation, we'll see those in some of my examples. It's not always wetland creation and planting of plants. There's other mitigation that is permanent and is guaranteed successful. So to just a blanket statement that mitigation is not usually a success is incorrect, and we'll see that in some of my examples. But additionally, new information on compliance monitoring and success rates is changing. And the SACS attended compensatory mitigation webinar series from the Association of State Wetland Managers on how creating more robust mitigation compliance tracking systems. And, and following up with monitoring and adaptive management is the key. And, and following up with monitoring and adaptive management is the key to success as well as implementing performance bonds and notice on title. So while old science and old practices was that mitigation wasn't successful, it, it's a completely different approach to mitigation on mitigation successes as well as creative mitigation is, that's not the trend any longer. So I just wanted to make that comment statement on the information they provided about mitigation. So that's all the feedback I have. There's some clarification I'm happy to accept from Mr. Loring. And then let's open it up for comments.
Okay, I'll open it up for comments. Mr. Lo, Kyle, can you hear me?
I can, Mayor Gere. Thank you very much.
Yeah, go ahead.
I, um, I, I hope if it's all right, I, I might ask to impose a few more minutes than just those three. Although as, as a fellow elected official of a small taxing district over here, I, I think you're right about that two-hour limit. That is about right.
Okay, I'll let you go over your two, three minutes.
Okay, thanks. I, I just want to start off by addressing those last three things. First, I, I'd love to hear from staff, any literature that suggests that mitigation has been more successful. In, in the fifteen years I've been doing this, I will say I do disagree that mitigation is occurring in a completely different way, although there have been some tweaks over the years, but certainly the, the standards have been the same for many years. And, and so I, I'd love to see more about that, but I have not been able to uncover any scientific literature that suggests that mitigation typically would compensate for the functions and values impacted. So, so that's just a, I'd love to see that. On those last two points that are still on the screen, those, those are not the changes that Evergreen Islands proposed. So that is probably why there is some confusion there. On that section nineteen dot seventy dot three forty dot A dot one, Evergreen Islands proposed putting a period after will be increased. So that's why it's weird, those clauses, it would be weird to separate those two clauses. So that was the actual proposal on that one. And then on the one below, there's that underlining of habitat assessment pursuant to AMC nineteen dot seventy dot three eighty. That was not part of the recommendation that Evergreen Islands made. And, and maybe I missed some other ones too, but I think in general, I do appreciate that Ms. Cooper has captured the intent of the comments, if not often the rationale. So there's a lot that was covered today. Let me just briefly touch on a few things. The first one, we started the conversation tonight by talking about language, about category two, three, and four wetlands and altering those wetlands. And I think Mr. Walters actually captured that pretty well. And he was saying that the idea was to make sure that you're limiting what can actually happen instead of having language that opens up and creates a broad allowance. Essentially, if the same language were applied that was agreed to later on for fish and wildlife habitat conservation areas and basically saying, you know, alterations are not allowed unless or except in these circumstances, then I think that would address that one pretty well there. There was a lot of talk about buffer sizes, and I can tell you that Evergreen Islands pulled those numbers from the Department of Ecology Wetland Science. And this applies as well to buffer averaging. When you review the science, the best available science from the Department of Ecology, and I'm thinking of that two thousand sixteen Department of Ecology guidance. And I did, I did write down the citation. I know Councilmember Walters, Walters was asking. It's page thirteen. That doesn't seem right, actually, from that two thousand sixteen guidance. Talking about buffer averaging. So I, I might need to pull that up. It is cited in the, in our comments. Seventy-five percent is the lower limit that the Department of Ecology identifies for buffer averaging. And it does only allow that for either a reasonable use exception or to improve the functions and values. So even the Department of Ecology, which has become a bit more lenient, I think recently, they do not say that buffer averaging is something that can be applied generally, but it must result in an improvement of the functions and values based on their science. For buffer reductions, there was conversation about that provision for both, I believe, streams and wetlands applying only to hardscape areas like parking lots. That does not exist in this critical areas ordinance. So make no mistake, there, there are not limitations saying that that would only apply in hardscape. Again, we're getting back to the conversation we had last week, a little bit about stream relocating. They would be great perhaps to have restoration language in the CAO if that is one of the goals. My understanding is that it's not, but that, that is not a provision that does that. So the buffer reductions, there's no science to support buffer reductions just occurring generally. It does appear to be limited to high intensity and moderate intensity uses, but that's quite a few uses. And that does not, again, once again imply fully parked out parking lot, I should say, not parked out, but a, but a full parking lot adjacent to wetlands. And so again, I, I have not seen signs that would support that. The setbacks, I'm not going to touch on that. I, I'm going to wrap up, although I've got much more than this, but I know it's, I know, we're, we're all ready to move on. I just want to say on that riparian management zone issue, I, I think you got really bad information just now. And, and I hate to be that blunt about it, but Anacortes, as you probably saw in those notes, is clearly within the forested eco-region in Western Washington. And the distinction there, those gold areas were areas where there was that imputed site potential tree height. And it was imputed because those were heavily densely urbanized areas like Seattle. So that, nobody, you know, nobody's digging down to figure out what those soils are like under city, the downtown Seattle, to try to figure out what they would support. But in places like Anacortes that still have, you know, less dense development, there is a lot of information like that. And that's why when you clicked on that map, you could see actually based, I believe primarily, maybe exclusively on soils, the site potential tree height. And it was based, it wasn't just soils. It was based on the type of tree that would grow in those soils and presumably in some of those areas. And so that riparian management zone approach definitely applies to the city of Anacortes. It would be very easy to identify those zones. And frankly, we heard that it was, I, I think, less customized and less protected. But in fact, it's both more customized and more protective because it would identify a riparian management zone based on the specific characteristics of a parcel at that scale. And then it would also, you know, five hundred pages of Department of Fish and Wildlife science say that it's, it's a more protective approach to apply that to, to areas like streams. By the way, if you read the definition, it absolutely includes streams. So I'll be honest, I was befuddled when I heard that somehow streams are separate from riparian management areas. That riparian area is, is the zone between a wet area and aquatic habitat and the terrestrial habitat. And there's a lot of functional interplay between those two. A lot of critters move back and forth. And so that's the purpose of protecting a riparian management area. You're trying to capture more of that ecosystem or interactivity so that you're not cutting off species. So I, I thank you. I'll wrap up with that. I really appreciate having a little bit of extra time. And I know we are all a bit tired on this Monday evening. So thank you very much for your time and attention.
Thank you, Kyle. Okay, Asa, welcome.
All right, can you hear me?
I can hear you. Go ahead.
Wonderful. Well, thank you, everybody. Thanks for, uh, thanks for all the hard work that's been done on this. I, I've got to apologize first, my, my written comments on behalf of Friends of the Forest. I think got lost in the labyrinth of the city spam filter. So I think that they, they are part of the record now and everyone should have access to them. And I, I also just, there's a few things that we had pointed out, but I want to focus on just one tonight. And that is movement corridors, wildlife corridors. And I appreciate the changes by the city staff to improve the language surrounding wildlife corridors and the acknowledgement of, of their importance within the document here. We, we still would like some more explicit protections. And there's a couple of different avenues for that that we're suggesting. And first off, in, for nineteen dot seventy dot three ten B, we'd just like to add a phrase that really shows the significance and, and priority of wildlife corridors. So the, the phrase we suggest, so it currently reads, "It is the purpose of this chapter to protect fish and wildlife populations and their associated habitats." And we'd like to add, "To minimize fragmentation of said habitat through maintaining and creating interconnecting corridors forming a continuous network of ecosystems." And then it would go on to finish and provide special consideration to conservation or protection measures necessary to preserve or enhance and dramatize species. So just having that in the, in the get-go to prioritize the importance of, of these wildlife and movement corridors. And our, one of our second suggestions was including movement corridors into the list of designated fish and wildlife habitat conservation areas. And this is something that city staff did put in there and address last week, that they added corridors into the list of potential, potential fish and wildlife habitat conservation areas. We do think it should be strengthened a bit with more specifics. There's no current definition in the document as to what a biodiversity area and corridor is. And so in defining this, we suggest using movement corridors with language we, we borrowed from the Spokane Critical Areas Ordinance, which reads, "A landscape feature that facilitates the biologically effective transports of animals between larger patches of habitat dedicated to conservation functions." It continues on for a moment, but in the interest of time, I will move on to our last thought for movement corridors, which is that while these could be designated through the habitats and species of local importance process, there could be a more effec, efficient mechanism for the department to implement this on a project-by-project basis. And I'm running out of time, but this is in the comments that we submitted. So I just encourage you to go ahead and look through those.
Thank you, Asa. All right, so now, Catherine, go ahead.
Are you asking me, Mayor Gere?
Catherine Hewick.
Okay.
Are you ready, Catherine? Can you hear me? Catherine?
There. I'm unmiked. Thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm at I'm at two, three, one, eight twentieth street. And I just had a couple of things. One is just there's lots of conversation about buffers. And I just think it's important to keep one thing in mind is that when you're talking about a, a distance from your critical area to out so many feet, when you're talking about the quality of that buffer, you're looking at it one point in time. And I think it's really important to think about things in a longer-term perspective. Because if you're talking about conservation, conservation is something that takes a long time. And protecting natural resources should be forever, I think, or at least several lifetimes. And so you have to give, if you, if you give up that land, that distance of land, you've lost it forever. So that's one thing just to keep in mind when you're buffer averaging or, or reducing buffers because they're in poor quality. That's just the one point in time. And then secondly, I, most of the Evergreen Islands comments I agreed with, there's just a couple that I really didn't. And, and one of them is just picking, I guess I'd call it picking on one kind of recreational activity, which is biking and not eliminating horseback riding or boating or canoeing or fishing as other less passive recreational activities. And so I think that really puts, pits interest groups against each other. And I think it's, I, I really would like to see the environmental or scientific reason to only exclude biking from passive outdoor recreation. And lastly, this is kind of maybe a bombshell, but I have the San Juan Island or San Juan County's Critical Areas Ordinance in front of me. And they have fish and wildlife habitat comfort, conservation areas that include shellfish areas, kelp and eel grass beds, spawning and holding areas for forage fish, mud flats, intertidal habitats with vascular plants, pocket beaches. And these areas all have buffers, geologic buffers, as well as tree protection zone buffers that extend about a hundred or more feet from the saltwater line or from the ordinary high watermark line inland. And I'm just curious why Anacortes doesn't have any fish and wildlife habitat conservation areas such as these listed in our critical areas ordinance. And that's all.
We do. They're all listed. All of those same ones are listed.
Okay, but then where are the buffers?
Buffers are not prescribed. They're site-by-site basis. Just like I explained with the riparian, that you have to do your own habitat assessment and management plan and prescribe the buffer per customized for your site.
Okay, because, because San Juan Islands is much, much, much more restrictive that way. Anyway, that's just a thought to consider maybe next time around.
Thank you, Catherine. All right, so Kathleen.
Okay. Okay, thank you. And thank you for putting a limit on this meeting. You're right, last week was pretty grueling. So I'm at two thousand five tenth street here in Anacortes. And I just want to make a couple of comments, mostly in support of things that have been said. And I don't need to go into the detail that others have. But in regards to the bicycling, there was a request for deletion of that word from the text and table of nineteen point seven zero point oh four zero. And before a hearing examiner, it's my understanding that the city promised to do that. What I heard last week was that the city council wanted it added back in. And so I will just make two comments about that. One is whose decisions have more priority? Is it the city council or is it the hearing examiner? And secondly, it is the word biking that remains. And I just want to be sure that word can be defined as motorized biking or as bicycling. And to avoid any confusion, I just ask that it be deleted. Okay, about buffers, the scientific literature about buffers is unequivocal. They are needed to protect wetland functions and values. And all the regulations in this CAO about reductions and averaging and alterations seem to challenge this. And it makes one wonder if we will soon need buffers to protect the buffers. Best available science protects, supports protection of wetlands for all sizes. And this document does not seem to do that, and I hope it can be adjusted accordingly. And then finally, comments about tree relocation as a method of repair. No matter where a trail is relocated to, it seems that there needs to be full restoration of the existing trail, and the new trail needs to be considered just that, a new trail. And I recommend that those two issues be added to the document. So that's it. And I just appreciate that comments are being taken seriously. I think they represent a lot of time and effort on the part of the public and also on your part as well. And I just think that together, I hope we can come up with a strong critical area ordinance. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kathleen. All right, so we'll go to Brian. Brian Wedsher. Can you hear me, Brian?
Hi. Do I seem to be muted still?
No, we can hear you now. Go ahead.
Great, thank you. Good evening, council members. I'm really excited and I support staff's request for the software to monitor mitigation in the long term. And I'd like to talk about mitigation tonight. And mitigation is a term used frequently within this draft document as a tool by which development can be permitted to incur into protected areas. This interpretation is historically incorrect and leads consistently to net loss impacts prohibited by the GMA. In the nineteen seventies and the nineteen eighties, when the idea of mitigation was first proposed, the concept was simply to try and fix mistakes that had already been made in the past. In the mid nineteen nineties, mitigation somehow became a proactive development tool. Mitigation was and is offered as an exchange for the development in otherwise protected areas for no more public benefit than an additional buildable lot or two. for no more public benefit than an additional buildable lot or two, theoretically with no net loss. The only problem is that mitigation is rarely successful and does not meet the no net loss criteria. Mr. Loring has several, has cited several statistics in his public comment letter referring to the failure rate of mitigation. The Department of Ecology Wetland Compliance Program has released data which shows only a 50% success rate in wetlands mitigation overseen by the DOE, which fails the no net loss standard. National conservation organizations estimate that long-term mitigation success rates for habitat replacement and restoration may be up to 80% unsuccessful at no net loss. Before mitigation can be used as a tool for development, the mitigation plan should be demonstrably successful at the expense of the project proponent, such as the Eogras Propagation Demonstration Project that MJB pursued to prove the viability of eelgrass restoration as a part of their shoreline development permit. I would urge you to add language to this critical areas ordinance to allow mitigation to be used only as a last resort for clear and overriding public benefit and with a successful mitigation plan executed before actual development begins, for instance, MJB. Otherwise, no net loss through mitigation is a myth resulting in a loss of habitat and ecological function. Mitigation is not a panacea to be used to enable development. It is a remedy to otherwise unavoidable impacts done for clear public benefit, not for private profit. That concept should be made clear within our CAO. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brian. All right, so Tom Blade, welcome.
Can, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
So I'm, I want to take a step back and, and a little bit about what Evergreen Islands fundamentals are. And to fulfill our mission, Evergreen Islands activities, I'm reading directly from our mission statement, is, is, shall be, but not limited to monitoring and supporting the responsible enforcement of local, state, and national laws to protect the environment. Actions may include, but not be limited to, environmental protection contained in municipal and comprehensive plans and policies, municipal and county shoreline programs, the Washington State Growth Management Act, the Washington State Environmental Policy Act, Washington State Shoreline Management Act, the National Environment Policy Act, and the Federal Water Pollution Control. And to also take any legal actions, any and all legal actions, including administrative appeals or litigation to protect the interest of Evergreen Islands as expressed in our mission statement. We also have a goal to propose or support legislating affecting the attainment and goals of incorporation within the current law. And so Mr. Loring has, has submitted his comments in the spirit of, of our, of our goals. And so we urge the city council and the planning department to consider them, which, which we have been doing very sincerely and with much consideration. And we thank you for the time and effort you have going through these suggested changes to this law. So thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Blade. All right, so Marlene Finley, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Gere and council members. My name's Marlene Finley. I live at 1410 Kellogg Place in Anacortes, and I'm with Evergreen Islands. I really want to congratulate staff for the great mapping tools and the GIS maps that you're starting to post online. It's been really helpful. And I remember at the August 10th city council meeting discussion on critical areas ordinance, when Mr. Miller requested an inventory of wetlands, asking what's the extent of wetlands? And asking about maps. And I think this was an excellent question. I bring this up again today because I think we need to continue to improve in the inventory, our baseline of wetlands and streams, and be tracking changes. From the very beginning, council members, you should have been asking, what is the status and trend in our critical areas in Anacortes? Our wetlands, streams, and habitat? As you're revising code, how do you know what's been impacted and where? How do you know if the existing code's working or not? And you need this basic information to determine the need for change in regulations. And I'm really happy to see staff asking for the software to track some of the impacts and actions. Second, I wanted to talk a, a little bit about passive recreation language and heard what was discussed tonight. In September of 2020, I, I sent you all a three-page letter on passive recreation based on research that I did. And I think it's an artificial construct. It's very confusing and it's totally unnecessary. And I also understand Catherine's comments about the language being divisive when it calls out certain activities. And so you might want to look at San Juan County's Critical Area Ordinance. It doesn't use the term passive recreation. It simply says outdoor recreation activities that don't modify land and vegetation and will not adversely affect the functions and values of wetlands. And lastly, just to note on setbacks, please think carefully about the importance of setbacks from buffers, especially as we see increasing wildland fire. Defensible space for wildland fire is a minimum of 30 feet. And if you don't have buildings set back from a buffer, that means residents are going to be requesting to create defensible space into the buffer in order to protect their structures in the case of more frequent wildland fires. And that's all I had. Thank you very much for your careful consideration this evening and last week as well.
Thank you, Marlene. All right, so really great discussion tonight. Thank you, members of the audience. Counsel, are there any thoughts before I adjourn the meeting? And this will be continued while we're taking the 24th test, going back on the 24th? Is that my understanding?
Mayor Gere, I believe that that was Mr. Meesmer's intent.
Thank you. I couldn't find my mute, I'm sorry.
Okay, it's all good. All right, any other comments? All right, we'll move back again on, oh, Mr. Walters, go ahead.
I just wanted to say that I agree with Kathleen Flanagan's comment with respect to that section about moving a trail, that the old location of the trail ought to be restored. I don't know if that was in the existing section, and I think that that's, that's useful. We had talked about adding some additional language in that section, I think, last week. And then with respect to the questions about mitigation, I do find that there's a requirement for a five-year maintenance bond. I don't know if that, if there is a standard associated with that. It seems to me that five years maybe isn't sufficient, but maybe somebody could correct me if, if staff has strong feelings about that. I'd be inclined to lengthen the period of time or at least allow for the director to lengthen the period of time depending on the, the significance of the mitigation. And then finally, I would like to see, maybe at the next meeting, depend on exactly what we have planned for how we move forward here. But I would like to see how all of this passive recreation edits and trails and those kinds of issues come together before we say that we're done with it. I, I, I continue to think that we are on track to basically preserve the status quo. And I think that that's what we want to do, but I would like to see how that, how that comes together. And then finally, we did get an email from Ian Muntz this morning, which I have not studied yet, but I think is worthy of going through those comments and questions that he had. And maybe we can do that, at least, I would like to do that at least offline with staff. But we might want to go through it in this meeting as well.
Thank you, Ryan.
Mayor Gere?
Yes, Mr. Walters.
I'd just like to add on to that some of the comments from Friends of the Forest that due to technical difficulties, we were just widely distributed to council today. But I'm really in favor of looking at the movement quarter language. And I'd really love to give that a, a close look and, and discussion when you come back on this subject.
All right, anything else? Okay, great meeting, great discussion. Thank you, Ms. Cooper, you did a wonderful job. And at this time, I'm going to adjourn the meeting. We'll see you all next week, tonight, goodbye.